Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for the Mayor of the City of Clarence, councillor Brendan Blomley.
Well, hello, welcome all. And before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murrimina people as the traditional and original custodians of the lands on which we meet. And I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Well, thank you, councillors, please be seated. Good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council meeting of Monday, the 15th of April 2024. This meeting has been broadcast live on YouTube. What is said in this meeting this evening is not protected by privilege, and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Item number two, apologies, we have a leave of absence from councillor Mulder, otherwise there's a full house. Before we proceed tonight, I'd like to take a moment to reflect on the tragic event that occurred in Bondi Junction on Saturday afternoon. As you may have noticed, as a sign of respect to the six innocent victims, and those still in hospital, some in critical condition, our flags at the front of the council chambers have been flown at half mast today. As someone who was there and witnessed this tragedy firsthand, I would just like to place on the record my appreciation to the unsung heroes, particularly the first responders. Officers of the New South Wales Police Force and ambulance service arrived quickly to secure the scene, hospitalise the injured and reassure members of the public of our safety. With our own 1996 tragic events still very much front of mind for many, these types of terrifying and heartbreaking events tear at the very fabric of our community and will have long lasting impacts on many. Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, as a sign of respect for the victims of the Bondi Junction attack and their families, may I please invite you all to stand for a moment of silent reflection? Thank you, please be seated. Fellow councillors, before we proceed this evening, I want to take a moment to talk about some of the conduct displayed by us all in this chamber of late. This chamber can be a passionate place, but when our passions cloud our ability to follow proper process, the clear rules of the chamber, our cause or causes us not to treat each other and our roles with the respect we all deserve, then clearly we've gone too far. We've crossed the line. We're all here for the same reason, to represent the Clarence community to the very best of our ability and to advocate for what we believe to be in the best interests of our city. I often refer to bringing our best selves to this chamber, and at times I too need to remind myself of my own words. Just as the community, the media and those outside the chamber hold us to account, it is important that each of us hold ourselves to account also. However, there are rules in place that govern how this council is to function, the processes we must follow and the manner in which we are to act. Somewhat ironically, the further apart our ideologies are, the more likely we are to clash, and that's just part of politics. But our interactions with one another can and should always be with respect and following the rules of this chamber. Colleagues, we've dealt with some significant issues around this table over the past few months, and as I mentioned at the beginning, this has evoked a great deal of passion from councillors. We are where we are, and we have many more important issues on the horizon, so I implore all of us to move forward with respect for each other and at all times this chamber. If we are truly honest, we are a really well constructed council with a diverse range of complementary skills and expertise. We balance and challenge each other perfectly while each contributing our unique collection of strengths. Councillor Ritchie, your political experience gives you a wonderful view of the big picture. Councillor Hunter, your passion for public and open spaces is only rivaled by the level of research you put into being a councillor. You always turn up to this place well prepared and very well read. Councillor Hume, your in-depth knowledge of the planning scheme and planning matters is truly impressive. You are also an extraordinarily effective advocate for our business community. Councillor James, you have the experience, the corporate knowledge and the context that most of us will never achieve. Your organisational knowledge is greatly appreciated by us all. Councillor Walker, you always bring a unique, well researched and well argued perspective to matters before this council. Councillor Goine, you are a true advocate for your community and are plugged into the issues they face and are important to them. Frankly, you've been like a duck to order, juggling first time motherhood and your work on this council. Councillor Dacko, you turn up as you are. The courage you have to be yourself and provide a voice to the issues you believe in and are important to the many in our community is truly an inspiration. It really is. Councillor Warren, you are a staunch defender of what you believe in, and that is a truly admirable quality. Now, we may not always see eye to eye, but you always come to this place well intentioned. Councillor Chong, I've seen a few councillors in my time who are involved in as many community events as you are. Please know, your hard work and dedication is appreciated by so many right across our city. Councillor Kennedy, we have known each other very well for several decades, and I've always been impressed with your strategic and professional approach, as well as your commitment and connectedness to our community. Colleagues, we have a great opportunity to do some fantastic things for our city. My role is to lead this council and be assured this honour is not lost on me. I have a responsibility to ensure processes are followed, and like any of you, I too get passionate about the issues I believe in. Now, at times, I may not have conducted myself in the manner of which I expect of others in this chamber, and I hope you'll join with me in drawing a line under the behaviour of late, so we can get on with the important job of governing this wonderful city. I thank each and every single one of you. Moving now to item number three, declarations of interests of councillors or close associates. Are there any declarations from councillors this evening? There being none, we move into item number four, omnibus item, item 4.1, confirmation of the minutes, that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 18th of March 2024 have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? There being none, we move on to mayor's communications and my diary, my diary for, it's here somewhere, from the 19th of March through today has been circulated to councillors. Also, thank you Deputy Mayor, also the Deputy Mayor, councillor Alison Ritchie and councillor Heather Chong, who have represented on my behalf as well, that's circulated for the information of colleagues. 4.3, council workshops as listed on the agenda, and 4.4, tabling of petitions. CEO, are there any petitions this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive one petition during the week, and I'd like to report to council that in accordance with the requirements of the Local Government Act, specifically section 58, I assessed that petition and deemed it to not comply with the act's requirements, and I have corresponded with the petitioner in that regard in accordance with the act.
Thank you, CEO. But by all means, if they're able to be circulated, please. While it's been circulated, we'll move on to item 4.5, reports from outside bodies. I don't believe there's anything to report from outside bodies this evening. Colleagues, are there any reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies? Councillor Hunter?
Yes, I would like to table the committee minutes from the Australian Coastal Council Association from the meeting held on Monday, March 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to table the minutes from the Bowery Community Arts Centre meeting of Wednesday, the 10th of April, and the Cultural Creative Advisory Group of the 21st of March. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Moving on now to item 4.6, the weekly briefing reports. I note the weekly briefing reports of the 18th and 25th of March and the 1st and 8th of April 2024 have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I refer to the 18th of March and to page four, the Lindisfarne Community Activities Centre, extension of closure period. On page four, it refers to, amongst other things, the new reopening date is expected to be Monday, the 15th of April 2024. Hire us will be contacted in due course, and those who are currently hiring Alma's Activities Centre will continue to be able to do so. So my question is, today is the 15th of April, is it open for business?
Thank you, Councillor James. CEO, please.
I'll, thank you. Unless Ms. Moore has an answer, I'll need to take that on notice. I haven't followed it up today.
Thank you. Councillor James?
Thank you. On the 25th of March, on page four, it refers to the potential activation of Montague Bay primary school oval, which sounds really great, and there is a quite a documented account of that. My question is, it refers to, amongst other things, that it will be as part of the AFL and for football use. Is it intended that the oval, once it becomes under the, let's say, the control of council for outside school activities for the use of the oval, that it will be available for other sporting groups, or is it peculiar to the AFL and local football clubs?
Thank you, Councillor James. CEO, please.
Thank you for the question. I'll take that one on notice as well. Thank you.
Councillor James?
Thank you. The Truthy Point Structure Plan project update on page 29, it is noted that, and it goes into what is the difference between the Skylands master plan and the Truthy Pensioner, sorry, Truthy Pensioner Structure Plan, isn't that a slip of the tongue? My question is to the appropriate officer, who pays for this structure plan? And is there a co-contribution from Skylands?
Thank you, Councillor James. Mr. Mark?
Thanks for your, through you, Mayor. Thank you, Councillor James, for the question. The structure plan is a responsibility of council. Council has current budget and there are budget submissions for an allocation next year. There is no planned contribution from a dollar perspective from the master plan, although that they are a key stakeholder and no doubt will be in a position to provide some significant input in terms of information.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Councillor James?
It just seems as though that this may be an exceptional circumstance, because in the past, we have asked the, if there needs to be a change in the zoning, that the actual developer contribute to that structure plan. So this is really an exception to the rule, is it not?
CEO. Oh, Mr. Mark, thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Councillor, Councillor James, at council's meeting in December last year, council resolved to undertake the structure plan work. There was no mention at that time with regard to contribution from an outside body, and I also believe we have responded in this chamber to questions from councillor Hunter with regard to contributions from the, potential contribution from the University of Tasmania, which was a similar answer. However, I'll qualify that by saying, the structure plan will not include at this stage the implementation aspect, such as the preparation of a planning scheme amendment. That will be a subsequent piece of work. So there are no decisions made on that at this stage.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Thank you. Any other matters arriving, rising for the weekly briefing reports? There being none, I note that at the end of our omnibus items, can I have a mover for the omnibus item? Thank you, councillor Hunter, second and councillor Goine. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving now on to item number five, public question time, 5.1, public questions on notice, there are two. 5.2, CEO, are you able to provide the answers, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The first question we have is from Ms. Mollinson, and it's in respect to natural values of the Rosney Hill Nature Recreation Reserve. The question reads, what is the council doing to protect the natural values of the Rosney Hill Nature Recreation Reserve? Natural values include the area of low woodland, ten metre grassland on the north slope, and the presence of threatened species, including the leafy sun orchid. The answer to that question is as follows. Council manages this land in accordance with the Rosney Hill Nature Recreation Area Management Strategy and the Rosney Hill Bushfire Management Plan. The protection of these threatened species and vegetation community is undertaken through annual monitoring of these areas, integrated weed management, managing recreational access and around these values, and coordinated fuel reduction management with the Department of Natural Resources and Environment. The second question is from Ms. Overitt in relation to the petition, Yes Stadium. The question is, were the signatories, signatures that were collected by the Yes Stadium group for the petition in support of the HPC and introduced by the mayor of, at the city of Clarence, sorry, the Clarence City Council meeting held on the 18th of March, collected from all over Australia or just Clarence residents as inquiries show and Facebook posts clearly state that anyone in Australia could sign the petition? In the past, Yes Group petitions have been Australia and worldwide, as is their group membership, was is the case in the table petition. And the answer to that question is that the signatories for the petition in support of the AFL High Performance Centre were from Australia wide. A breakdown of the numbers from Clarence, other areas in Tasmania and mainland Australia is included at section 2.5 of agenda item 8.1.1 on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, CEO. And 5.3, answers to previous questions taken on notice. Mrs. Marsh's question from last morning is listed on agenda. Moving on to 5.4, 5.4, questions without notice. Are there any questions from the gallery this evening? Yes, sir. If you make your way to the microphone, please, your name and where, your suburb, please, sir. Thank you, Mr. Webb.
I have a question to ask council with regards to the operation of number 20 and 42 Scots Road Ristonvale and the ongoing pollution that's emanating from those sites. I need to raise concern with the council of suspected non-compliance with the planning scheme and/or conditions on planning permits. My question is this, will council take action on these sites under the Land Use and Approvals Act of 1993 to instigate compliance under the section 63b of LUPA?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. Mark?
Through you, Mayor. As we discussed, this matter is quite complex. Council has obligations under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. It also has some particular restrictions on undertaking enforcement action on any matter that is likely to fall under the purview of the EPA. I will take the question on notice and provide a more comprehensive response back.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Are there any other questions from the gallery? Yes, sorry, this, sorry, here, the gentleman in the...
Mr. Mayor, my name is Michael Fig from Lauderdale.
I didn't recognise you, Mr. Fig.
Well, in nowadays, you've got to go undercover occasionally. A question that I've been raising for 30 years in this council chamber is to do with the stormwater in Lauderdale. The stormwater system in Lauderdale is still non-compliant with the current Drains Act or the equivalent, and I've been asking when the council will be compliant. The last response I had was council was doing a drainage assessment or a stormwater assessment, and that it would go to public consultation. That was two years ago. Can you please tell me what's happened to the public consultation and those reports, I think done by GHD, and why we haven't got a compliant drainage system?
Thank you, Mr. Fig.
Thank you.
Mr. Webb, if you'd like to say this word, please offer it first up. Sorry, Ms. Moore, thank you.
Three in there, I will have to take that on notice.
Thank you. So it'll be listed in our agenda for the next meeting. Mr. Fig?
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Your name and suburb, please.
Yes, my name's Jim Woodward. I reside in Laurel Street in Ristonvale. So my, my question is, and I thank you very much for having us here this evening, is firstly to commend Clarence City Council on the programme to reduce smoke in public places, playgrounds, 20 metre exclusion zones. For the benefit of streamers at home, I've got a picture here of the previous mayor, Mr. Doug Chipman, with the Breathe Easy campaign sign in the bus mall. So my question is, with that particular programme in mind, and the, I guess, the health of our children, adults and so forth, will that same, I guess, degree of scrutiny on airborne pollutions and so forth be extended to the operations at 20 and 42 Scots Road, otherwise known as the reprocessed TAS Spectran site, given that it's still unclear on what permits the operation runs under, and the fact that it's less than a kilometre from the primary drinking water for all of the eastern shore, operating at the Rusin Brook Dam?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mark?
Through you, Mayor. Obviously, I've given the answer to the question before, I'll also be taking that on notice.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the public gallery this evening? Thank you, Mayor. Name and suburb, please.
Good evening. My name is Regina Williams, and I live in Fuchsia Road in Ristonvale. My question to you is, a development application by Spectrum Group and reprocessed TAS at 20 and 42 Scots Road Ristonvale was advertised on the council's website recently as a waste storage and reprocessing facility, recycling and waste disposal, partial retrospective application and Level 1 and 2 activity, including associated buildings, stockpiling areas and associated works, which was re-advertised. Can the power council please clarify on notice what aspects of that development were seeking retrospective approval, and whether this means they are currently operating without permits from councils or other agencies?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Mark?
Through you, Mayor. As per previous question, I'll take that on notice. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any other questions from the gallery this evening? Mr. Webb, you have a second bite of the chair, eh?
I've left it, but I've only left one question.
Oh, we, it's time for a second one, if you'd like a second question. There's no pressure.
Look, I've been here since 2009. Actually, I've resided...
Oh, to the microphone, please, sir.
I've resided there since 1991, and I've watched this, and I've been here on several occasions with regards to this matter. And at the moment, my understanding is, what I've requested under section 63b, council being the governing body under section 48, has duty of care to proceed with this.
Mr. Webb, thank you for your question. Mr. Mark, are you in a position to provide an answer to that?
Through you, Mayor. I'm not actually sure if there's a question there, but I'm happy to wrap it up in the question, in the answers on notice.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we now move on to item number six, which is deputation, deputations by members of the public. Members of the public making a deputation are reminded that they are limited to three minutes, and a timer will sound at the end of that time. In the interest of fairness, I will strictly enforce the three minute time limit, so fair warning. CEO, deputations this evening, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four deputations tonight. The first deputation is Mr. Martin Foster in relation to 7 Tulloon Street.
I'm Martin Foster. Firstly, I'd like to thank all the councillors that could attend on site on Sunday or view the property. I know it was very short notice. I know it was very short notice. The lady's just handling out some reference copies I will refer to during my talk. Number seven Taloon Street, there's one house on it. After the proposed development, it's going to be three two-story, 24-square homes in our area. They're not small units. My main concern is loss of privacy due to the outdoor patio terrace on the second level of townhouse three and the lounge windows also on level two, both facing east. That's on page three and four, just as a reference. Viewing from the property will look directly into my private open spaces and living area. There are some photos also on five, page five, six, seven, eight. I mainly seek amendments to the proposed developments, the privacy screening to the patio and frosting to the overlooking windows. Also, the distance between the second-story patio terrace and my boundary fence is three meters. So that's a second, a second story within three meters of my boundary fence that overlooks all my private areas. And three meters is probably about that far. It, it's disappointing how planning's got to this stage in an area like Lindisfarne. And today, it seems like open private spaces aren't that private, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Foster. Seo, a second deputation or deputy this evening, please.
Thank you, Mayor, a second deputy tonight is Mr Eddie Carmichael, also in relation to seven Taloon Street.
I'm Eddie Carmichael and own with my wife Leonie, nine Lanry Court, Lindisfarne. We have owned this property since 2006. This property is on the west boundary of seven Taloon Street. And I wish to thank the councillors who gave up their time Sunday to look and understand my and neighbours' concerns. A big thank you. Loss of privacy, I have concerns with the above development regarding the location of the west-facing deck and lounge and main bedroom windows on unit two, looking straight down into my private open space and into my kitchen windows, deck and back door. While sitting at my breakfast bar, which we do regularly with guests, we will be looking directly into unit two's lounge room and bedroom across their deck. I have sent photos and marked plans indicating the above concerns to planning. Loss of sunlight, we have enjoyed the early morning sun across our deck and in the kitchen and deck area for approximately 18 years. When we first moved in to nine Lanry Court, the sun would rise over Gordon's Hill. Now we wait until it is above nine B Taloon Street, which was a recent development, which is a two-story, large black building, dark building. After the above development is built in its present design, we will then lose approximately another two to three hours of sunlight in the morning. I understand the council cannot authorise changes to the planning rules and regulations at this time, but I would like the council to investigate ways to change the rules to allow for common sense in future developments. I am appalled the residents who are over 70 and into their 80s who worked all their lives and invested in a quiet area in the community to enjoy the rest of their lives in privacy in their own private open spaces and in the sun. Are put in a situation to fight to maintain their lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Carmichael. Seo.
Thank you, Mayor, a third deputy tonight is Mrs Frances King, also in relation to seven Taloon Street.
Thank you, my name's Frances King and I live at nine D Taloon Street. I just want to ask what rights have we got when new developers can simply take away our privacy, lifestyle and winter sun, which is going to be a big thing, is the winter sun, because it's going to be two stories high. In view of the fact that these properties are speculative and probably have already been sold, so we must have some right of reply over our personal lifestyle. The following points will severely affect our lifestyle and the value of our property. Loss of sun a lot earlier in the day, could be three hours earlier in winter. As previously mentioned, property one stares straight into our dining and living area. Our outdoor living area is completely compromised, as this is the only outdoor area we have. No more, will have no more privacy and with respect, when we designed this house, it was designed to fit in with the existing house at number seven Taloon Street. These points could severely affect the value of our property. So all in all, our personal lifestyle will be severely compromised at the current design of the proposed unit at number seven and we feel that some compromise or some help must be seriously taken into account by the developer. Surely some design alterations reducing the impact of our lifestyle could be made. It would appear that no points of view have been taken in the design of these units as they will adversely affect all of our properties.
Thank you, Mrs King. Seo.
Thank you, Mayor, a final deputation tonight is from Mr Alex Hartley in relation to the notice of motion related to 31 Beach Road, Lindisfarne.
Thank you, Mr Hartley.
Good evening, councillors. I, Alex Hartley of Lindisfarne, enter this deputation into public record as formal notification to the Clarence City Council of an ongoing safety issue at the intersection of Beach and Melona Road, Lindisfarne. In late 2021, I requested that the council construct a guardrail around our property in response to a vehicle colliding with our house upon failing to navigate this intersection. To the best of our knowledge, this was the fourth incident involving vehicle crashes resulting in similar property damage. Alarmingly, the very first incident occurred almost 20 years ago and resulted in the construction of a guardrail by councillor Richard James, which was later removed for reasons unknown to us. In an independent road safety audit of the preceding five years, but taken in 2022, the review concluded that no action was required by council as no accident trend existed despite our property being hit by vehicles in 2017, 2018 and again in 2021. Frustratingly, here we are again, dealing with the aftermath of more property damage just two years after the council denied my request for action to ensure the safety of our property and young family that resides within. On the 31st of March 2024, a fifth incident has resulted in more property damage after the TAS Network's electrical pole adjacent to our house was impacted from a vehicle failing to navigate the roundabout. Re-examining the conclusion of the independent review, I now counter that a trend amongst these incidents does in fact exist. Our house, five times. As such, I'm yet again requesting the council install a guardrail around our property to ensure our safety once and for all. I further request that this is conducted as a matter of urgency and occurs in addition to future proposed upgrades. The ongoing risk to my family cannot be ignored for further two years. I understand that some councillors have concerns regarding the risks to motorists associated with the installation of a guardrail. I counter that any risk associated with future impacts would otherwise still exist in the absence of a guardrail as these vehicles will simply continue to collide with our house. Guardrails are purposely designed to balance the risk to motorists, pedestrians and property alike, specifically engineered to tolerate and minimise the impact of vehicle-related crashes. Our house is not. A guardrail may not eliminate risk to motorists, however, the absence of one certainly fails to mitigate the current risk to my family. As emergency healthcare workers, my wife and I have witnessed countless situations whereby failure to mitigate risk has resulted in serious morbidity and death. We fulfil our commitment to ensure the safety of the community on a daily basis. In turn, we have a reasonable expectation that those appointed to council equally fulfil their commitment to ensure our safety as local residents. Continued inaction despite 20 years of historical danger at this intersection is with respect contrary to this commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hartley. And that's the end of our deputations, Seo, thank you. We now move on to item number seven of our agenda, which is planning authority matters and I advise that council now intends to act as a planning authority under the, under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993. Moving now on to item 7.1, which is a development application for seven Buchanan Street, Bell Reef. Additions and alterations, there's a recommendation before us, I'll call for a mover, please. Thank you, councillor Walker, a second. Thank you, councillor Goine, councillor Walker. Thank you, councillor Goine. Deputy Mayor, you wishing to speak on this one? Any, I'll call his wishing to speak, it's councillor James, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a part of the, what we call the Bell Reef Bluff Special Area Plan and before I make any comment, I'd just like to put a question to our city head of city planning.
Councillor James, just, excuse me, Mr Ma, sorry, there's going to be a question to you from councillor James, sorry, councillor James.
Mr Ma, would you just, in relation to this development, does it basically tick all the boxes in relation to, to the Bell Reef Bluff Special Area Plan, please?
Thank you, councillor James, Mr Ma.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor James, for the question. Essentially, the answer is yes, but it's a detailed assessment that's contained in the report. But it either meets acceptable solutions or the performance standards as a set out in the Bell Reef Bluff Special Area.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Councillor James.
Thank you for that and I am aware that 18 months ago, I think a similar proposal was, it didn't actually make, come to council because it was a, there was a number of issues that needed to be sorted out and I stand corrected on that, but this is a much better proposal than last time. I can say that because there was a lot of angst from in the community as part of that development that was being proposed at that time and it was subsequently withdrawn because of the planning department, I think at the time, made a number of suggestions when the, a number of residents actually approached council as part of their requests for information in relation to it. So we've moved on from there and I think that in, at the end of the day, this has resulted in a better, a better development. It has had three representatives. But I think that on, on the spaces and I've been an avid believer and supporter of the Bell Reef Bluff Special Area Plan and I know a couple of us in this place have been all here at that time when we, it went through. So it's a, a remarkable improvement on what we had in the past or as part of that early stage of this assessment and I seek council support.
Thank you, councillor James. Any other colleagues wishing to speak? This, Marshall. If being none, I call on the mover, councillor Walker.
Yes, I thank councillor for their contribution. And I note the points raised, but I'd also take, and I think one of the things to note about this in the context of the Bluff Plan is that as far as the site coverage goes, it's increasing from 17.5% to 22%. A very rare thing to come before us in a chamber with such a low coverage, lot ratio, so seek councillor's support.
Thank you, councillor Walker, well, that being the case, the recommendation is before us, serving the, and that is that it be approved subject to the following conditions and advice, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you, colleagues. Moving now on to item 7.2, which is the development application for seven Taloon Street, Lindisfarne, demolition and three multiple dwellings. There's a recommendation before us to be approved subject to conditions and advice. I'll call on a mover, thank you councillor Hume, is there a second? Thank you councillor Hunter, councillor Hume, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the officer's recommendation very reluctantly, but unfortunately it's something I believe we have to do. I was with a group of councillors that went down to meet with the residents. Councillor Ritchie was there, as was councillor Darko, councillor Walker, councillor James. We talked to the residents, they have some very legitimate concerns. As with a lot of planning matters, we're in a position where we as elected representatives who, who are elected to represent the community, but under the Local Government Act and the Planning Approvals Act, our role changes when we see as a planning authority. And our role is elected representatives who are supposed to be answerable to our residents and ratepayers having to make objective decisions to enforce our planning scheme that we get very little say in what the, what the scheme actually contains. But, you know, we could take, we could take a stand and, and do something different on developments when, when a development is clearly compliant with the planning scheme. And our options are, we can not make any decision at all, in which case I think it reflects very poorly on, on us as members of a planning authority. What happens in that instance is it would then go to the officers under delegated authority and they would make the decision as per the recommendation. We could reject their development, but unfortunately in terms of this development, I'll explain why in a minute, we don't have a defendable position if we, if we reject the development. What that ends up doing, and there's also no alternate motion before us. So what that ends up doing is the developer predictably will take it to the tribunal and that will result in more costs for council and eventually the same decision as was recommended by the officers, being put in place. The other option is adding conditions to the development to address the residents' concerns. The problem is that conditions must be defended in terms of, they can only be imposed in order to make a development compliant that was non-compliant. And in this case, in regards to all the residents' concerns in relation to overshadowing privacy, et cetera, the performance criteria don't come into play because the acceptable solutions are invoked. And in fact, with, with this development, there is only one acceptable solution that makes it a discretionary developments in relation to private open space of townhouse three. Townhouse three has the required private open space, but on one dimension, it is 15 centimetres shy of the requirement, which is four metres. And then it meets the performance criteria in relation to being, you know, accessible as private open space and oriented to take advantage of sunlight. So had the developer proposed to extend that dimension by 15 centimetres, it would have been a permitted use. It wouldn't have even been advertised and the first anyone would have known about it was when the, when the construction work crew started arriving. So unfortunately, our hands are tied in this matter and, and I really do sympathise with the residents and it demonstrates that we have a, we have a planning scheme where a lot of leeway is permitted in terms of having impacts on residents that we as a council really don't have the power to defend them against. And that, and that's why I'm, I'm moving the office, the officer's recommendation. What the residents could possibly hopefully rely on is if they can talk to the developer and the goodwill of the developer, if they're willing to amend the development, if they're willing to voluntarily put in, for example, frosting on windows to protect privacy. Because I don't think that they, the people who would be moving into these houses want to be able to, you know, look across and stare directly at their neighbours' private rooms and have those neighbours staring directly into their space as well. So hopefully some common sense will prevail. But unfortunately, and I did explain this to the residents yesterday, our hands are really tied in this matter because according to the planning scheme that's been posed statewide on, on all the councils across the state, we have no choice but to approve this development.
Thank you councillor Hume, councillor Hunter.
I'd like to thank councillor Hume for his very articulate and well-thought-out response. I share his sentiment and really feel for the neighbouring residents who are here with us this evening. I agree, our hands are tied in this instance. There are so many times in this chamber I'm extremely frustrated because the planning scheme is more and more diluted as each one comes out over the last few times. And the general public have no awareness of this because it doesn't impact them at the time. And I hope that in the future, both council and the state government can do more to engage with the community when they're out for consultation, to make people aware of the changes that are likely to affect them in the future because that is the opportunity to really engage and try to change. Because that is the opportunity to really engage and try to change things before they're set in stone.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Deputy Mayor, councillor Ritchie.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I concur with the statements of my colleagues that have just spoken. And many of you will recall the number of times that councillors have stood up in this place to lament the difficulty of the tools that are available to us under the planning scheme. Unfortunately, what we've seen, in my opinion, is an erosion of the flexibilities and the tools that councils have perhaps had traditionally, that as with each iteration has been mentioned, new planning scheme, less flexibilities. The idea that, you know, the checkbox is all that matters, to minimise effectively the capacity for objections, to minimise the capacity for community voices in relation to planning, that's where I see this as heading. Those of you who have heard me speak many times on this issue will know I have grave concerns about planning and community voices in planning being further and further extinguished as we head down a pathway to DAPs, which I think is something we know is being progressed. Many, many people are concerned in the community. I attended the rally during, ahead of the state election campaign. These are the sorts of things that people care about on the ground, how they affect their lives when something happens to be built around them. I just think the pendulum's gone a little bit too far and unfortunately we have to live the reality along with the residents that we try to represent. I think there is certainly some merit in having tried to streamline the planning scheme across twenty-nine councils. I understand the principle behind it, but it's just gone too far in one direction, which has made it very difficult for us to avoid a cookie cutter approach to things, which doesn't in my view lead to optimal planning outcomes where you remove the flexibility, you remove the capacity to deliver sometimes very common sense outcomes for community. So, yes, much of my other colleagues have said, we, we do have our, our hands tied in this matter. There's certainly no legs for an alternate motion, otherwise I'm sure one would have been moved and that wouldn't be in the interests of anybody to do that when we don't think it's defendable. So that's one of these situations. I do want to thank the residents for inviting. I also want to thank the developer to whom I reached out to and who's expressed an openness to engage with the residents on this matter. And was very generous with his time in discussion today. So I'm really hoping that we can see some positive communication opened up between the residents and the developer in this instance and I'll be looking forward to monitoring what, what comes out of that. But I will support the motion.
Thank you deputy mayor. Thank you councillor Darko.
What really frustrates me in this case is that it's not that the residents that have criticisms are a bunch of NIMBYs. They're very, very reasonable concerns with only very small alterations. And it's, it's really perplexing that the planning scheme doesn't allow us the, the powers to just make that tiny adjustment to bring that into alignment, but otherwise, as others have already said.
Thanks councillor Darko. Just for my colleagues to please direct all comments through the chair as well. Any other colleagues? Councillor James, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and may I say from the outset that we do have a discretion. We have a discretion to either accept the officer's recommendation, alternatively put forward another proposal and provide the necessary conditions. Because this has been advertised, it has been put out to the community and the representations basically are associated with the private open space. And if you, you have to really go down there and look at the situation to, in, in order to appreciate how this development is going to impact upon the neighbouring properties. There's no doubt about that. Now, in the officer's report, on page thirty-eight, under four point four compliance with zone and codes, it says, I quote, "The proposal meets the scheme's acceptable, applicable acceptable solutions of the Car Parking and Sustainable Transport Code and the Road and Railway Assets Code, with the exception of the following, the general residential code." Now, that residential code clause eight point four point three is quite specific and it's contrary to the acceptable solutions in relation to private open space for all dwellings, for all dwellings. Now, townhouse three has an area of twenty-four square metres of private open space. Okay, they have that at their disposal and therefore they will be able to enjoy it if this development goes ahead. However, the minimum horizontal dimensions is three point eight five. So that's contrary to the acceptable solution. And so now we go down into the performance criteria to make an assessment as to why the planners have said that each dwelling is assessed as having private open space areas which are capable of serving, of serving as extensions of the dwelling for outdoor relaxation. But unit three has already been addressed as saying that it's contrary and it doesn't provide the amount of public open space that's necessary for the adjoining neighbours to enjoy their own private open space. And that is part of one's amenity, you know, in being able to live in a, in a situation where they can, in the open, private open space, be able to enjoy a lifestyle. And that is basically being addressed by all representatives tonight, even though it's been identified by the plan that the unit three stands out as being the one that isn't of the actual, doesn't meet the acceptable solutions or is contrary to the site coverage. So it's contrary to the planning scheme, so I need to correct a couple of my colleagues in relation to that. So we go through the performance criteria to make an assessment about that. But nowhere within the performance criteria does it specifically address the private open space or contrary to the site coverage with respect to townhouse three. So it talks about each dwelling is assessed to having private open space. Each unit is provided with an area of public open space, is conveniently located. The site is orientated in a long axis from north to south. But it doesn't talk about the private open space, which has been identified by the planners as being contrary to the planning scheme. So when we come to look at these sort of applications, what I find surprising in my years in this place, and it's been a long time, long time, and that is that sometimes in circumstances like this, there is a condition put in there as part of the officer's recommendation for approval, that adequate screening be provided on those overlooking areas of those developments. So that, that is sort of locked in as a condition. But in this circumstance, there's nothing. There hasn't been a condition put in here, which I find is quite unusual, given that in most applications that we had in this place, there has been that screening imposed as a condition on the approval, subject to advice and so on and so forth. I will not support the application.
Thank you councillor James. Before I call the next speaker, I'd just like to reiterate a comment I made some meetings ago, and that is it's important that we come into this place, particularly sitting as a planning authority, that we be factually correct in all that we contribute to the debate. Are there any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we are sitting as a planning authority and as such, we are governed by the rules that are set out and the regs of the planning scheme. There can be some discretions, but they're often quite fetid rather than unfetid. Through you Mayor, I'd like to ask a question of the chief planning officer.
Thank you councillor.
And that question is excluding the fifteen centimetre minimum horizontal dimension shortfall of unit three, on a square metre inch basis, does it meet the public open space requirements?
Mr Ma.
Through you Mayor. Thank you councillor Walker for the question. Clarifying the answer, we're talking about the private open space for the dwelling, not public open space. And the answer is no, but it has been assessed to, sorry, the answer is no, that it doesn't meet the approval square metre inch test, mention the acceptable solution. However, the performance standard, which allows you to go below that minimum, has been deemed to be met.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Councillor Walker.
Now, I think it's really important to understand that there is, if you like, the performance standards, which are effectively the workarounds, the ways to try and say that whatever the, whatever's the hard and fast, here are the ways that can also be, be looked at within a system. I'm not necessarily an overall fan of it because I think that the, the scheme becomes overly complex. Whenever there's complexity, there's a subsidy. However, that is where it sits and that is the element that would be focused upon, I suspect, in, not entirely, but, but, but very much so if this was being adjudicated at another level. Infill is incentivised under the statewide planning scheme and most of this is occurring in Clarence, or in fact, almost all of it is occurring in, in an arc between Gilston Bay and Howra. And as is the case with this development, the way that the planning scheme works, I think for many developers, is that it incentivises double garage, double story, multiple bedroom townhouses. The plot size that you can fit that onto doesn't have to be overly large and, and the, the, the the, the return on investment is, is considered high. So that's not necessarily council's view as the most ultimate form of living, but that is largely what the market's focusing on. And the impact of, if you like, the way that infill is currently operating in Clarence is happening in what, as I said, the general residential zone, which is suburbia, rather than what is known as the inner residential zone, which are areas that should be noted really close to service centres. So that's where the pressure's happening and, and it's uneven. So we find particularly areas like Tulloon Street, historically modest houses with very large backyards, the impact is far more visible and far more impactful than, than other areas. The load, if you like, is not being evenly shared. And, and we are a municipality that is experiencing rapid growth. And, and this is part of the, the problem, I think, of what, what is causing frustration in the community is that the fact that there is a lack of, if you like, apartment options close to service areas and I would, and as I've said many times and I'm saying again, the Rosney CBD is the Monty for it. This is where there should be multi-level apartments for people to downsize into that wouldn't have any impact on, on existing residents because there aren't really any that it butts straight on to. However, we are where we are. The main issue that has been raised by the local residents isn't a NIMBY approach. This is not one person throughout yesterday said, "Don't want any development there." There is an acceptance that something is going to happen and that, that this is what is occurring. And as I said, it's not a, "Don't do it", it's a, "Give consideration please to some element of privacy." It's not a, "Not in my backyard", it's a, "Please don't completely overlook into my backyard at all times, please." It's not unreasonable. However, within the confines of the planning scheme and within how it's been structured, we don't really have that head of power to enforce the reasonable changes that are being requested. And I hope that the two-way dialogue that deputy mayor Ritchie mentioned is something that will be able to occur. So as such, what can we do as this matter impacts other areas or other sites again on Tulloon Street? Because there, there are still some, some larger blocks there. Well, as I say, hopefully with the likes of the City Heart project, trying to give that opportunity for that density to be occurring in areas such as where there's high levels of nearby services, in areas where the impact isn't so big on the character of surrounding areas as well. Because the other thing that's, that's happening is that what's attracting people to our areas is, is going to be changed over time if it all looks just like homogenous dwellings. So not an enthusiastic supporter of, of the proposal as going forward, but hopefully the privacy issues can be addressed separately. So on that note, I'll leave it there.
Thank you councillor James. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Wa, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I share my colleagues' frustration. I'm not a fan of this sort of development that impacts so significantly on the neighbours and it's really frustrating that we can't do anything about it. It is good to hear that there are some possible moves towards mitigating the impact on privacy, but very difficult to mitigate the impact of loss of sunlight. And we all know how important sunlight is for mental health and it's, yeah, it's a source of great frustration that the planning scheme does not take that into account and that thinks that, you know, a couple of hours in the middle of the day is fine when you've been used to all morning sunshine to sit and eat your breakfast and read the paper. So once again, I express my dissatisfaction with the planning scheme.
Thank you councillor Wa. Any other colleagues? There being none. Councillor Hume, right to apply please.
Thank you Mayor. I think it's important to, to clarify a couple of matters just in relation to councillor James's contribution. So in a, in a planning, planning scheme, there's a question of compliance and it relates to use standards. Development is assessed according to a set of use standards and those use standards have two components, acceptable solutions and performance criteria. And where a development doesn't meet the acceptable solution, that's when the performance criteria are invoked. Now, yes, there have been developments in the past where a condition has been added to provide screening. The purpose of adding a condition and, and it has to be a minor amendment, that's the rule. Otherwise, the developer has to go back and reapply if, if it's, if it's a major change. But a minor amendment, but the purpose of a condition is to achieve compliance. Now, in relation to this development, because it meets the acceptable solutions in relation to privacy, there's no consideration of performance criteria, therefore there's no need to, to condition it. And that's why we can't condition it. There are no considerations of privacy when it comes to the performance criteria in relation to the, the public open space of townhouse, sorry, private open space, I did it too, of townhouse three, and that's the only thing that makes this a discretionary development. Now, I, I absolutely abhor the term discretionary development. I think it's a terrible term because it, it creates an image in the minds of the public and, and people can put forward the argument and councillor James often does put forward the argument, "Oh, well, it's a discretionary development, we have a discretion." But we don't have as much, the definition of discretionary development under LUPA is basically a development that comes to the council for decision rather than being decided by the planning officers. We still have to apply the planning scheme and if, and if we don't have a, a reasonable argument to say that this does not comply, then our hands are tied. And the argument to say this does not comply is if we can argue with the performance criteria and say, "Well, in relation to the private, private open space of townhouse three, it's not conveniently located in relation to a living area of the dwelling. I don't think we can argue that." And it's not oriented to take advantage of sunlight. I don't see how we can argue that either. So, you know, this, this term discretionary development, I think, needs to change so that people can understand really how constrained councils are in making these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hume. I'll put the motion, that is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? Say carry. Well, colleagues, councillor and I conclude this deliberations as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act nineteen ninety-three. Move on now to item number eight, reports of officers. Before we go to eight point one, to those in the gallery, please don't feel obligated to stay here for the rest of the meeting. If you are only here for that item, we won't be offended. But you're more than welcome to stay, of course, so. Moving now on to item eight point one point one, which is a petition in support of the Rosney High Performance Centre. There's a recommendation for us, I call frame mover, please, of the recommendation. Councillor Hunter, thank you. Seconded by councillor Kennedy, thank you very much. Councillor Hunter.
Yeah, I will just rise to say that I love petitions. They're great, they demonstrate democracy, the community is getting involved, they're engaged. It takes courage for anyone to initiate a petition and whether it's something I voted for or against doesn't matter. I think it's fantastic and I welcome them anytime.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor Kennedy. Councillor Kennedy. Wonderful. Any other colleagues wishing to, councillor Warren, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I draw my colleagues' attention to the fact that this is a motion to note a petition, it's not one to re-prosecute the case on either side, but I would question whether it's a petition. Because I looked up the definition of a petition, a petition is actually requesting some change or course of action, and this doesn't either. So it's certainly a list of signatories who have a passion for a particular topic, and I note that around about nine hundred of those were Clarence residents, and I'm happy to note the petition, but I, yeah, note the list of signatures, shall I say.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Anyone else who's expected, councillor James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I say from the outset that, and I'd like to pose a question through you to the chief executive officer, and that is, there was an electronic petition that was lodged, but you quite rightfully said it didn't meet the criteria of the petition, and that was from Janice Overitt. That was an electronic petition, and at the top of each of the pages, it had the words of that petition and what they were actually bringing, brought to the attention of those persons who signed it. But on the one that has been, which we are discussing this evening, on each of those pages, there is no wording, there's no words that dictate what those signatories are basically signing, as it has been the custom, in my opinion, for not only hard copy petitions, but also electronic. So my question to the chief executive officer, is this particular petition, which doesn't have the wording on each of those pages, which account for nearly over two thousand petitioners, is this an exception to the rule and therefore, you know, it's basically taken that from now on we can have an electronic petition without the wording at the head of each of those pages of the signatories?
Before I call on the chief executive officer, I'll just remind councillor James and all colleagues that the question comes to me, it doesn't go directly to an officer, it comes to me as chairman. Thank you, Sir Yeh.
Thank you, Mayor. The answer to the question lies in the construction of the Local Government Act, section fifty-seven. Section fifty-seven includes provision for paper-based petitions or electronic petitions. A paper-based petition is required to have the petition question repeated at the top of every page for the simple reason that those petitioners may be signing the petition in different locations at different times, and therefore it is important that the actual petition question is on the paper being signed. The difference with an electronic petition is that that is happening in one central location online, and therefore it doesn't need to have the petition question repeated on every page.
Thank you, Sir Yeh. Councillor James?
Yeah, okay. I just find unusual that Janice Overitt provided a electronic version and had the wording on every page.
Mr. Councillor, councillor James, we'll just stop the clock, please, while Sir Yeh might want to clarify this, please.
Sure, I'd be pleased to, Mayor. The petition that you refer to has been manually amended by the petitioner to include that question, the petition question at the top of each page. So the idea behind an electronic petition is it needs to be presented electronically, it shouldn't be amended other than to have a statement added to certify that it hasn't been altered. And clearly, adding the question or any other detail to each page amounts to that. Now, in the past where we've accepted petitions that were received electronically on that basis, we've done so exercising some judgment, but technically, those petitions wouldn't have complied. But picking up councillor Hunter's comments from a few moments ago, our approach is to always be to try and bring petitions before council, provided they substantively comply. The one that you referred to tonight doesn't comply because the question was actually changed partway through.
Thank you, Sir Yeh. Councillor James?
Yes, look, fine, thank you for that, and I'd just like to refer to the, on page fifty-six, two point five, a breakdown of the location of the signatories is detailed below. In Clarence, nine hundred and thirty-seven, other southern Tasmanian areas, thirteen hundred and forty-eight, other locations in Tasmania, which is far and wide, five hundred and fourteen, and mainland Australia, a hundred and seven. So this is really an unusual petition because it, in my experience, usually the petition says, to the mayor and alderman of the city of Clarence, we the undersigned residents, okay, do hereby request such and such. In this particular case, it's an interesting one because it was sent far and wide and it became a petition and it really conjured up in my mind that really it's a petition that ought to be presented to the House of Assembly, but that's dependent on the wording and what the meeting procedure is within the House of Parliament. So there may be, but this really is more of a petition and not a petition that we would normally deal with. And for the very nature of the wording and also, as I mentioned earlier, that I thought that the wording should be on each and every page of those signatures. The question here is again that, okay, it's going to be accepted and obviously those persons who signed it have a great interest in a high-performance centre in Clarence. And then specifically, I think from the petition, say it wanted, it was going to, they wanted it not necessarily in the parklands, but it didn't really go into that detail, but they were quite open in their support for a high-performance centre in Clarence. So if you're going to look at the numbers, a total of two thousand nine hundred and six signatories are contained in the electronic petition in support of this, then if, again, you need to probably dissect the number of people that actually signed this from Clarence, which is only nine hundred and thirty-seven. So that really is almost on a par with the one that we're going to deal with in a few moments, which was signed by eleven hundred, for calling for a public meeting to discuss it. So again, the wording petition, I find, is quite unusual. It just seems to me that this petition is really very, very casting the net, it's very wide and is extreme, and I think that really, from a normal situation, in my opinion, it doesn't really stand up as a petition that I would have thought would have come through here as part of a petition to the mayor and alderman of the city of Clarence, we the undersigned residents do request.
Councillor Goine, thank you.
Hi, I'm councillor Hunter. Also, note petition and I'm glad for any correspondence to come from our community. We constantly talk about community consultation. If people want to go out and sign not petitions because it doesn't actually direct us to do anything and say that they're supporting something, then that's great. As far as I'm aware, Tasmania's not that far and wide, and two thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine Tasmanians signed that petition, or the not petition, sorry, the not petition. And as far as the petition or not petition being cast far and wide, the internet is far and wide. People from all across the globe could have signed either petition that is electronic. So I note the not petition and I'm grateful for any not petitions that can be submitted to council. Thank you.
Councillor Goine. Councillor Hume, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it is a petition. The relevance, if you look under the Local Government Act, section fifty-seven, section fifty-eight, in relation to petitions, it makes it clear that any person can petition the council. And we could have a petition signed by a thousand people living in Switzerland and not a single Clarence resident or rate payer, and it still complies with section fifty-seven, fifty-eight of the act. In fact, the only place the act starts to mention the people in our municipal area is in section fifty-nine, which is the bit in relation to public meetings. Having said that, yes, the numbers are relevant and what number of people, you know, are our residents and rate payers, I think is important, it's important information to know, because those are essentially the people we are representing. So, you know, I thank the CEO for that information in the report. I think what we can see is that this is an issue on which a lot of people are engaged on different sides of the argument and there's a lot of passion on both sides. So happy to note this petition.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Any other, Deputy Mayor, thank you, councillor Ritchie.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm one of these pesky people who have instigated petitions in my lifetime and have enjoyed the process immensely, and I think it's a wonderful part of our democratic process, whether it be at any level of government, to see people getting out there, taking the time to care about something enough to put forward a proposal, engage people around them, no matter how far and wide that might be, to sponsor a position on a particular matter. The mayor spoke earlier about us all having our passions and bringing our passions to this place. Well, that's no different, this is a mechanism for people outside of this place to be able to express a view in one way or another, it's just another one of the avenues in which we're able to receive communication from not only the people that we directly represent, but from all of those people who might have an interest in something that's relevant to what's happening in our city or indeed our state more broadly. So I say, well done to the people who actually go out there and get these sorts of things rolling. It does take time and effort and it's greatly appreciated from my perspective, regardless of, as councillor Hunter said, regardless of how I may have voted in the past, how I may vote in the future, it's always greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ritchie. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Hunter, write a reply.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just a little bit perplexed how we can debate something that we're here to note, but anyway, it's a bit of fun. And I might be a little bit naive, but I don't perceive this petition in competition with the next petition on the agenda. It's just people voicing their opinion, as council often does, and we encourage community engagement to occur. Take the report as it is, take the numbers as it is, it's great to cast it far and wide, we've got the numbers where people are from, you can take that as you wish, but I think it's great and I thank the community for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. So I put the motion as a recommendation, principally that councillor notes the petition as well as B and C of the motion. All those in favour? Those against? You're abstaining, councillor James. All right, abstention for councillor James, thank you. Moving now on to item eight point one point two, which is a petition for public meeting AFL High Performance Centre, call for a mover, councillor Warren, thank you, seconded by councillor Goine. Councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to actually propose an amendment. Can you advise me on how I could do that? Because following our discussions at the briefing on Friday, I'd like to change the final, the fourth dot point, rather than just saying at the Rosney Bowls Club, to say at the Rosney Bowls Club or other appropriate venue, just to give that flexibility.
So dot point four of C.
Yes.
Public meeting to be held seven PM the fifteenth of May, two thousand twenty for the Rosney Bowls Club or?
Or other appropriate venue.
Right, is that acceptable to the seconder? Excellent, great, that now becomes the motion.
Thank you. In that case, I would like to recommend this motion to my colleagues and thank the officers for following procedure when you receive a petition, checking its compliance, and if it reaches a certain threshold, the steps then follow automatically. So I ask my colleagues to endorse that.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Councillor Goine?
I also thank the council and the staff for all the hard work that's going to go into this meeting, and again, consultation is important and community conversation is important. And I also thank councillor Warren for suggesting the amendment, particularly because I think it's important that all people that want to attend this community gathering can attend, and I would hate to see that people would be refused due to the lack of space. So please, everybody, make sure your voice is heard and attend the meeting.
Thank you, councillor Goine. Councillor Hunter, thank you.
Again, I rise to say I absolutely love this, and I am literally so excited for the public meeting, and I commend the community for reaching that thousand signature threshold to enable that to happen. I think it'll be a really interesting meeting, I hope we get people from both sides and we can hear the different perspectives as well as council, their view of the facts, and I think it'll be really interesting, and I invite everyone from the community to participate.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Councillor Dacke?
Yeah, so obviously we've heard really strongly from the community on either side, people saying it isn't appropriate in this spot, and people saying they really, really love football and they want to see it go ahead. And my hope is that this public meeting can find some kind of middle ground that's less divisive than what we've had so far.
Thank you, councillor Dacke. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? They've been done. Councillor Warren, write a reply, please.
Yeah, thank you. Democracy in action, I encourage all my colleagues to support this motion.
Thank you. I'll put the motion that is a recommendation with the amendment as outlined by councillor Warren. All those in favour? unanimously carried. Well done, colleagues, thank you very much. I note that there's nothing under eight point two, asset management, or eight point three, financial management, moving on to eight point four, governance, eight point four point one, proposed local highway standard requirements bylaw. Call for a mover. Thank you, councillor Chong, seconded by councillor Hunter. Thank you, councillor Chong.
I think I'll just support the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Hunter?
I've just got a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great idea, I just wanted to confirm a couple of things. On page seventy-one in seven point two, it notes that there will be direct financial implications to council in the form of increased depreciation resulting from the changes proposed in this proposed bylaw, which makes sense, I'm pleased it's noted. My question is, have we considered how we accommodate and plan for this additional expense of depreciation?
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Sir Yeh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. This is an issue that would be dealt with through our normal asset management valuation process, and effectively, as new developments become subject to a new bylaw, then obviously as those assets are handed over, then we start to value them and depreciate them from there. So it won't be an instantaneous thing, it'll be something that happens gradually over a period of time.
Councillor Hunter?
Thank you. And my second question was in regards to footpaths on both sides of the roads. Now, I note that we can't require it at the moment. My question is, are we constrained by the Tasmanian standard drawings? And is that something we are bound by or can we advocate to amend those?
Sir Yeh, I'm going to refer that one to Mrs. Moore.
Oh, Miss Moore.
Yeah, we are. So we are, the Tasmanian standard drawings do have a requirement, or they have standards set out in them, that set out where footpaths are on both sides, or you're on one side or not at all. And there is an opportunity for each individual council to actually deviate from that, so there's a section in the back, but also our bylaw allows us to deviate from that as well. So they are there as a guiding, a guiding development document, but there are, a number of councils deviate from a number of the standards in various ways.
Councillor Hunter?
Excellent, I'm pleased to hear that. On that note, I seek my colleagues' endorsement for this recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and perhaps I could, I've got a question through you too, Miss Moore. Miss Moore, there are a number of footpaths throughout the city in the older areas that have and have been part of the policy of this place for the last twenty years, to have footpath on one side of the road, and obviously, that has been the norm for most of that time. And in, following your comment you just made in relation to that being a possible change, does that mean that council may, down the track, given that we may decide to, as a matter of course, have both sides of the footpath sealed or developed, that we may have to undertake in those older areas of Clarence, pursue a course to have both sides or that existing footpath added to the other side of the road? In the older parts of the city.
Through you, Mayor. I think we recognise that in a number of locations across the city, we do have either substandard footpaths or we have no footpaths, and I think going forward... And I think going forward, if the highways bylaw were adopted, we would also have to consider where there might be a requirement or a demand from our community to increase the walking provision or the network for pedestrians. And that would have to be prioritised with the recognition of what our budget capacity is and would be budgeted for and planned for and prioritised on that basis going forward. So, I think it would be not an instant thing that we would need to do the moment the bylaw was adopted, but we would add it into our network planning for walking and cycling and active transport provision into the future.
Thank you, Miss Moore. Thank you councillor James. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none, councillor Chong, write a reply please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I think we all obviously look forward to the discussions about the new bylaw and what that might mean for us going forward. There are obviously a whole range of issues that we will be discussing at that point. But at this stage, can I ask my colleagues' support to authorise the commencement and just result to accept the contents of this existing one?
Thank you councillor Chong. I'll put the recommendation, all those in favour. You know, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to item 9, 9.1, a notice of motion seen in the name of councillor James.
I'd like to formally move the recommendation as listed.
Thank you. Is there a second up? Thank you deputy mayor. Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, it's not an easy, easy job and I can go back in time and I approached Jill Ellis today to see if we could come up with a record of when I approached council in the 90s to install a guard barrier on the corner of Beach and Malana Road. And it was installed, it went through council and it was one of these very heavy rigid guardrails which took the brunt of a number of accidents which occurred back then. And this was at the request of a couple of the very senior citizens who were actually residing in the property at 31 Beach Street. So, really the tone of this motion is to really proceed with a retaining wall or even a guardrail, if that may be the best option at this point in time. And it wouldn't take a lot of money to actually do that. It would basically be on the same sort of curvature as it was when it was installed back in the 90s. And even though this motion refers to a retaining wall at the back of the path or other options that's suitable, I still think that we need to do something now. And I'm always thinking ahead, if you're going to actually try to ring on a motion which has a bit of oomph and a bit of go to it, then that may be what will be required to at least get something there in place now, rather than if we go ahead and look at another motion that's been circulated, to look at options and to see whether or not there is a capacity for it and there needs to be works done in conjunction with the other areas, area at that turning point, like the corner of Malana and Beach. So, I really want to see something happen here and we had a resident who spoke very, very emotionally about the concern he has for his family and their safety. And this isn't the first time it's happened, you know. It happened some years ago and circumstances may have changed because after a certain time that guardrail was dismantled and taken away. But then, over the last couple of years, we've had this particular situation where the family is in a state of real upset and concern about the safety of their family. So, I seek council support.
Thank you councillor James. Deputy mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And if I can just commence by removing any confusion around the alternate motion or the motion that was circulated. That was produced because, as colleagues who were at the work agenda brief would know, there was a possibility that the original motion may not be proceeded with. So, I circulated something just in case that was to happen this evening. So, given that councillor James has proceeded, I've decided to second that motion and won't proceed with mine, essentially attempting to achieve exactly the same thing. I am hoping, I mean, we're talking about an urgent officers' report being produced, I think it needs to be sufficiently brought in its scope to look at a range of design and safety options for that area. It doesn't exclude considering a wall or a rail, there are new technologies around shock absorbing bollards, you know, all sorts of things that we don't want to discount out of the consideration of the officers to come up with what is the best option for this intersection, which of course, we have heard from the Hartley family about these concerns. There are others across the city that I've also raised separately to this matter and discussed with colleagues. They do concern us all and I would encourage people to continue to report not only incidents but near misses as well. So, all of this adds to data for council and council officers to feed into the council committee process that we have that actually assesses these matters. So, the more data, the better. It's a bit like Crime Stoppers, just report, report if you can. That's very handy. So, I thank councillor James for bringing forward this motion. I think it's very well intentioned and of course, the idea is that we can try and expedite an assessment of this particular intersection and come back with some proposed costings and timeline, which is of course, what we would be looking for to see when something can be done, just not what can be done, but when it can be done. So, those things should be covered in the motion and I urge colleagues to support. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ritchie. Councillor Hugh, oh then councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, the approach I'm taking to this motion is a general philosophy I have that there's very little harm in producing a report. And I went and had a look at the intersection, I had a quick chat on the phone with Mr Hartley. One of the things I'm, I suppose, a bit perplexed about is, it sounds like there's an issue there, an ongoing issue, I mean, four crashes, you know, there's certainly very legitimate concerns. But interestingly, the briefing we received during the agenda brief was that there'd only been two reported crashes and that there wasn't a consistent cause for the two that were reported. Now, I don't know whether that's because of the age of other crashes that occurred or whether there were incidents that just weren't reported to the police at the time. But it would be interesting to see if we can also, through this report, and I don't know whether it's possible, get a sense for whether there is some kind of consistent cause that we haven't been seeing. Because, you know, without being aware of that consistent cause, it could be very difficult to design solutions to account for it. One thing I certainly noticed in that intersection is there's a high volume of traffic and that's because it's where the, it's the Begonia Street rat run, you know, comes down through that intersection. And so, you see a lot of cars going through what, you know, was ostensibly designed as an intersection for a suburban area rather than a major thoroughfare. But I would like to ask a question and my curiosity was piqued during, well, earlier when it was mentioned that councillor James advocated for a barrier to be installed and one was installed and then was taken out. Could I ask through you, Mayor, what the reason is that that barrier was removed?
Thank you. Miss Moore in a position to provide an answer?
I'd probably have to take it on notice, although I could hazard a guess it might be related to the ability for pedestrians to get across the road with the barrier in place, so I would have to confirm that. But I would take it on notice with that caveat.
Thank you, thank you, Miss Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand that, you know, Miss Moore may not be in a position to provide an answer immediately. Having said that, it is unfortunate we can't have the answer, you know, to feed into this discussion, but having said that, I don't think it's going to change my support for the motion, because the motion is to prepare a report and I think it's important that we get that information, so.
Support the motion. Councillor Kennedy, and then councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to thank councillor James for actually bringing this motion to us and listening to the briefing the other day and understanding some of the issues with regards to traffic. Now, I happened to be there going through, visiting Taloon Street at about 7.15 on Sunday morning. And it was the first time in my entire life, and I use that intersection a lot, that I was the owner driving through. Now, when we look at all the different traffic reports that we receive, I don't think you can get any better evidence than from a deputation tonight. And we're looking at a couple here that are really having struggles living in their own home. It isn't something that's just happened and I respect that, you know, we may only have documented some incidences, but this actually came to council as councillor James alluded to a long time ago. So, it's been an ongoing problem and I wholeheartedly support us providing a report, but I'd like us to go a little bit further and try and find a solution as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Councillor Hunter?
Yes, like my fellow colleagues, I think it's really important we do something about this. And I met with the residents as well and spent some time there and was really surprised by the amount of traffic at that intersection. And I think all but one car went over the actual bit in the middle, which was concerning. However, after the agenda briefing, well, at the agenda briefing, we asked questions because this is put in next year's financial proposed, well, proposed budget. So, it's kind of redundant in a way because it was confirmed to us that these investigations around safety, because the issues were known, would be investigated as part of that process anyway. So, I'm confident that's going to occur. I'm not completely supportive of the wording that's in this motion. I actually am far more supportive of councillor Ritchie's amended motion, if she were to move that. And it's largely the fact that in councillor James's motion, it's that will deliver those works urgently. Now, I think from a good governance, good planning and prioritisation point of view, we can't necessarily set that expectation that it's going to be implemented urgently. And that's why I actually like councillor Ritchie's motion more, because it's a far more thought out, thorough, well-planned process, in my view, that will have the same result.
Thank you. No offence intended there, I'm sure.
No.
Councillor Walker, thank you, and then councillor Goine.
Thank you. And again, I think ultimately councillor James's motion is worth a reread potentially because it's including councils, and this is the word that does the lifting, capacity to fund and deliver those works urgently. So, I think there should be comfort that this is not binding council to getting in there and putting up a retaining wall tomorrow or locking in some safety barriers. And again, I, from my Robin Cordier, I remember the barrier being there and the barrier incentivised people to actually walk a little bit down Beach Street, which was a much safer place to cross than to be, you know, crossing Beach Street right at the intersection. You could still cross Malana closer to the roundabout, but, yeah, I guess we'll find out a little bit more on that process. And I am going to, yeah, when the email came through about this matter, I'd actually been going through the budget papers, so I was responding fairly quickly around the fact that there was a, this is an area that we are focusing attention on and delivering a significant quantum of funds. However, every night, I guess, is, you know, a night of concern until things improve. The other thing I think we should be bearing in mind with this, and councillor Kennedy did mention the, just the overall volume of traffic, I thought it was to be in the 23, 24 financial year, but it is now slated as the 24, 25 financial year, the ceiling of Begonia Street. And I don't think it would hurt to just revisit some of the things that were said on the night when we decided on that. And my philosophy was, this process should be safer and slower. So, if the ceiling is done right and the calming is done right and ideally the review is done of Flagstaff Gully Road leading to it and whether the speed limits are appropriate, then we can end up with a road that's safer. But again, if slower, may discourage some of the traffic coming through. And if you want to go back to the ancient years of 2012, my first council motion was to create some slowness in the mornings, which was basically from, I think, the hours of, might have been 6.30 to 9.30 or 7 to 9 to ban west flowing traffic, except for local residents, noting that Begonia Street can get incredibly icy at night and all of those things. So, that would have discouraged the trady traffic and that in the morning. The night came to present it and I couldn't so much as get a second up for that motion. I think it would have been a pragmatic approach, but that wasn't what council decided to do. So, here we are. And I think that safety matters, design matters, but the bottom line, I guess, is every extra car that goes through an intersection is an increased probability of something happening. And at the moment, the sheer volume is just increasing that probability as well. I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you councillor Walker. Councillor Goine?
One of my favourite Jeremy Clarkson quotes, and for those people that don't know, he's a wonderful driver in Top Gear, is that it's suddenly becoming stationary that gets you. Speed has never killed anyone, it's the suddenly becoming stationary. And as someone who has suffered the lifelong consequences of becoming stationary, and I wasn't even going very fast, whilst I support safety factors, the research into preventing serious accidents from something that prevents you, sorry, that makes you become stationary is the most important thing here. I understand the family's concerns. I was the sixth incident on the front lawn of the gentleman's property that had had an accident in that year and it was in the February. And he had been contacting not our council. In response to that, they have since closed the road to everything but local traffic. So, whilst I think that this is a really important matter, as councillor Hunter said, I really think that it's something that needs to be reviewed in the thoroughness of time to ensure that we do the right thing by both the residents and the possible people that may be coming stationary.
Thank you councillor Goine. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none, councillor James, write a reply please.
Seek council support.
Thank you. I'll put the notice of motion seen in the name of councillor James, seconded by deputy mayor councillor Ritchie. All those in favour? Against? So, Karen, thank you. Moving now on to 9.2, notice of motion seen in the name of councillor Walker, Hard Waste Collection, seconded by the deputy mayor. Councillor Walker?
Thank you for that, Mr Mayor. So, the point A of the motion, if you like, or the first point is that council acknowledges that the hard waste collection was a highly valued service to many Clarets residents. And I consider this simply a matter of fact. I don't think we should try to minimise how valued the previous collection was to many. And in fact, a lot of residents noted as a point of differentiation when they were collaborating or talking to friends and family from elsewhere. They sometimes compare services and this was one that often came up as something that they were getting from their rates. And sometimes their neighbouring people elsewhere were a little bit envious of that fact. The second point is that, you know, we're requesting officers investigate on the report for contemporary alternative approaches to hard waste collection interstate to inform and assist councillors in how a waste, hard waste collection service could best be reinstated. So, even without the difficulties council experienced securing contractors, even if we had contractors lining up to do it the old way, I don't think we want to go back to that model because it left suburbs piled up with debris for weeks. It was a magnet for out of area freeloaders and it also encouraged households, if you like, to be doing a big purge because this thing only happened, you know, once a year or sometimes not even that frequently. Now, you have all heard me say it before, it's on my bingo card that councils are laboratory- Now, you have all heard me say it before, it's on my bingo card, that councils are laboratories of democracy, that we should try things and we should learn from experiments done elsewhere. And I'm a big fan of the fact that communities are indeed different and that a homogenised approach by all councils is not the best way to usually provide services because communities are different. They have differing priorities and expectations. And innovation is not a dirty word. In fact, it's usually the only way that anything gets better as far as council service delivery goes. In 2021, in that council election, I campaigned for green waste wheelie bins. And council would soon take that up around the 2013 after facing workplace health and safety concerns with the old bundle and pile-up approach. That, again, had WHS concerns. We were the first council in Tasmania to bring out green waste wheelie bins and others followed our innovation. So I did seek hard waste feedback via the article that I put in the recent Clarence newsletter and I received numerous representations by email, phone and letter. And it was really noted that the cessation of hard waste collection services did not impact all Clarence residents uniformly because not all residents have access to a motor vehicle and a trailer and the physical strength to pile it and load it up. And so as such, weren't always able to take the hard waste to Mornington Park Waste Transfer Station, which was what was often touted as the alternative when the service stopped. So again, I mean, forced standardisation of waste collection services across southern Tasmania would reduce this council's ability to determine the best waste service mix that suits our community. There might be some wider benefits from, you know, collective bidding contracts, but this is not necessarily so. Because if we move to a, move away from the annual pickup to, if you like, ongoing collection by request, you can have a more consistent workforce and plan of equipment to deliver that service. And it is the case that hard waste collection by resident request is provided in multiple mainland councils. And in some circumstances, this is undertaken by the same external contracting company that we currently use to collect our general waste in Clarence. So I believe that the operational know-how and skill sets shouldn't be hard to determine and find out more from. And I'd note that a by-request service addresses many of those concerns, as I outlined with the previous collection. The lack of hard waste collection is increasing the likelihood of illegal rubbish dumping. I'd like to think this motion is nuanced. It's aimed to help inform councillors about reinstatement by understanding best practices from elsewhere. I've never strived on my time of council to be the council with the state's cheapest rates because that would really require pairing back services to parsimonious levels. I think I'm not alone when I say that I really feel the focus is on delivering value for the rates collected. And I want Clarence to continue offering a compelling value proposition for the services to our community that they can be proud of. I think this motion puts us further in that direction and I seek your support.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Deputy Mayor councillor Ritchie.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank councillor Walker for bringing forward this motion, which, from my recollection, is in fact giving effect to some discussions that were previously had in council, where whilst we ceased the collection after 2023, that there was to be a revisiting of this. That certainly was my understanding. I'm happy to be corrected if I'm wrong. But nevertheless, I'm glad to see that this motion comes forward to give effect to that consideration because I think there is no doubt that hard waste has been traditionally a very popular and well-received and well-utilised service that was offered across the city. But, and we all appreciate and understand the issues that led to the more recent situation. But I think this is going to be a very interesting process and I'm really looking forward to what we see come out of it. I noticed that, you know, more than fifty percent, I think fifty-four percent of councils in Victoria continue to offer a hard waste service. And this will provide an opportunity to look at the sorts of things that can intersect, you know, whether there are weight options, what is collected and what isn't collected, what are the fee options, you know, user pays, who doesn't pay, who does, how, whether there are alternative options, open days for people to bring their own at the waste transfer station, how it complies with, you know, state legislation and regulations. Or because, you know, waste as an issue is always moving and changing. So it's a bit of a fluid environment in that respect. So I think it's a very exciting opportunity for us to revisit this. I noticed Lonsaston have a really high rate of reusing what they're collecting, although what they're collecting is certainly a lot lower than ours. So understanding why that is, we had ninety-five percent going into landfill, whereas there's sixty percent of what they're collecting being recycled, reused, resold. So I'd like to understand why that data looks so different. So hopefully some of those things can be fleshed out as part of what we get back in respect of a relook at this. So I do think that this will be pretty interesting exercise to go through and I'm very supportive of the motion and I look forward to where it lands.
Thank you, councillor Ritchie. Councillor Goine and then councillor Hunter.
I'd also like to thank councillor Walker for bringing this motion forward. I also thought that it was something that was kind of on the table and I'll be certainly excited to be pilfering back through the rubbish again. In fact, my son only would sleep under Lampy, which we collected from the side of the road when he was a little bit younger and struggling. And I do note that we have two Brighton councillors in the house tonight and they do still offer a hard waste collection. So our sister councils can manage it. I'm sure that they'd be more than happy to discuss with us the opportunities to bring back the hard waste collection. So I say colleague's support.
Thank you, councillor Goine. Councillor Hunter.
Yes, thank you councillor Walker for bringing this forward. I think I appreciate the sentiment of the motion, but I'm a little bit perplexed because investigations are already budgeted to occur in the twenty-four, twenty-five financial year and there are very clear reasons for not continuing with the hard waste service, which this council approved last year. And the reasons for that being is that we couldn't find a contractor to do the work as it's a dying service both in Tasmania and on the mainland, which was outlined to us. That data from recent collections highlighted that the majority of waste doesn't actually get recycled or reused, that the rubbish left on the sides of the roads for weeks and sometimes months and longer if there is delays, which leads to additional rubbish going out into the environment. And we even asked council staff to review alternatives before we approved that, to look into providing the service to only pensioners and those with concessions cards. But that option too was almost as much as offering the service to everyone. Now, the difficulty with only offering it to certain people is that everyone pays, but only some people actually get that service. Now, I hear about the likelihood of increases in illegal dumping, but I've actually yet to see any data on that. But I'm really, I'd love to see it if anyone has it so we can assist that in factual ways. But I'm a bit worried that approving this motion will confuse council staff who are already undertaking investigations, given the recommendation we approved last year. And it might consume their valuable time to do something that sidetracks them a little bit. And I also fear it will create community expectation that we're going to reinstate the hard service, the hard waste service as it was, which I'm not keen to do. However, I'm still keen to hear what everyone else has to say on this matter and keep an open mind before I make a decision.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Councillor Chong, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through one community together, I've been involved with the Hardto Skip in the Clarence Plains area for many years, which is a mission Australia and other organisations. So it's not a council deal, but we provide skips on several days for people to bring rubbish. We did one recently. And I can honestly say, although there was a lot of commentary about the fact that we don't do the hard waste collection anymore, we did not see much more hard waste than we've seen in the past few years. There were a lot more recyclables, a lot more cardboard that was brought, so it could be recycled. But we didn't see a great deal of hard waste through there. And these were people who, you know, came on trailers and all sorts of things. It wasn't that they couldn't get stuff there if they wanted to. And Mission actually took utes out to places, to the houses, to collect stuff from people who couldn't bring them. So yes, there was hard waste, but there wasn't that big influx that I think we were all concerned about. And like councillor Hunter, I'm concerned that this implies that we're going to do the same kind of hard waste service that we used to do. If you, you know, reading that, I could easily think, oh, yes, we'll go back to the way we used to do it. And as councillor Hunter said, you know, there's a lot of work being done at the moment to assess what's the best thing we can do going forward, how we can educate people so that they're not having just throwing stuff away into hard waste, but actually reuse, recycle, whatever is the options. And I am concerned that this motion at this stage undermines the work that's being done currently. Maybe in six months' time, if we haven't seen any reports, this would be great. But I think we're likely to see a lot of information come out soon and I would really hate this to undermine the work that's being done.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Councillor Kennedy, thank you.
Thank you, mayor, and I certainly will be supporting this motion because I take great comfort in part B to report on contemporary alternative approaches to hard waste collection. Now, many colleagues will understand that I was a huge fan and I fought to keep it as long as I could. But we've moved on from that at this point. I would love to know. That's the sort of information that I would really like to know. And I don't think that's going to be any waste of time or funds because waste is one of the most major things we do. And to have that information, I think, is a critical part of our job. Thank you councillor Walker for bringing this motion to us.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Darko.
Thank you. And as others have done, I would like to thank councillor Walker for bringing this to our attention and hopefully expediting the issue. It's absolutely necessary that the people of Clarence can access a service to actually remove the bulky items. Yeah, hopefully aiming, as others have noted, for reuse as opposed to landfill, which was what was happening previously. We've all been to the tip. We've all bought stuff there. I think we can all agree that if that was what was happening, it'd be a lot better. And as for evidence of dumping, I encourage folks to check out the Rivulet in Clarence Plains, to check out Goodwin's Road. There's so much trash over there. And we need to be doing what we can to alleviate that. Yeah, frankly, the core issue which we can't as a council resolve is capitalism and consumerism moving to a throwaway disposable culture with items that are cheaply manufactured because people can't afford to buy something that's actually quality. But we can make some positive changes here by providing an avenue for reuse.
Thank you, councillor Darko. Councillor Warren, thank you.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, and thanks colleagues. Lots of really good points. I too am a little uncomfortable with the notion that the hard waste collection could be reinstated. I would be more comfortable if the wording was ways of dealing with our hard waste or, you know, at the bulky items. It was quite concerning at the last time we ran this service to see what people were throwing out, which looked to be, you know, perfectly usable things. So I'd be really interested to know what's happening in Lonsaston. And this gives us the opportunity to investigate those options. And I was really pleased to hear councillor Chong mention education because that was one of the things that we put money aside for when we chose not to do the hard waste, as to how we could move people from that throwaway consumerism society. I do notice one slight inconsistency, potential inconsistency in the explanatory notes in that people don't have cars and therefore that might lead to an increase in fly tipping or whatever. If people have cars, if people are fly tipping, they have access to transport. They just choose not to take it to the transfer station. The Southern Tasmanian Waste Regional Authority is certainly looking at working together, all the twelve councils of the southern Tasmania, where you can have economies of scale for dealing with fly tipping and things like that. So there are a number of range solutions being discussed at a range of levels. Yeah, look, let's get some data. As somebody has already said, I thought we were doing that anyway. I thought that was what we had voted for last year. But I'm just a little bit uncomfortable that this could be interpreted as we're bringing back the same scheme that we had before, which is not affordable.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Councillor James, thank you.
I think I'm the last speaker, which is great.
I'll be the judge of that.
And you'll be the judge of that. That's fine. There's no worries at all. Look, I'd like to congratulate you on this motion. And not only that, I even mentioned to you, I would not speak to councillor Walker directly. I'll speak through the chair and just say that at our meeting on Sunday, I did say it's an excellent motion and really it's food for thought. And also, what is interesting here is that the last sentence or part thereof, assist councillors, assist them in how a hard waste collection service could best be reinstated. Now, there's a play on words which doesn't necessarily mean it's a fait accompli. It means that there's going to be some investigatory work, there's going to be a report. And I, for one, would like to know what's happening interstate. We know what's happening intrastate, but nevertheless, let's find out what's happening elsewhere. And this is really what it's all about. It has been a hard waste collection, highly valued service to the community. And I, for one, felt that, you know, because of the costing factor and because of, we just had a backlog in the last collection because the collectors, and I think it costs us a lot more than what we anticipated because of the nature and the cost of the whole city, you know, it became so expensive. And this approach from collecting information that may lead to a hard waste collection service, but not in the format, Mr Mayor, that we've been used to. There may be other means by which we can have a hard waste collection, inverted commas, but not necessarily in the format that we've had in the past. So I, again, congratulate you, councillor Walker. And I believe this is really a good step forward and it doesn't lock us in because if we receive or when we receive the necessary information, it may not be comparable or suitable to our circumstances. But nevertheless, let's go through the process and let's find out what's available interstate.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Kiem, you can be maybe the last speaker.
Well, councillor Walker may be the last speaker.
Yes.
Yes, I thank councillor Walker for introducing this motion. And consistent with what I said in the previous motion, my general approach to these things is there's very little harm in producing a report. And this report, yes, we have discussed extensively through the budget process last year. But it may be that there are approaches that weren't covered in that advice that, you know, that may be looked at and considered. It is important that, you know, any waste service is sustainable and is valuable for money. And I know that was a big concern with the previous hard waste service. However, in relation to the point that when we had the hard waste service in place, a lot of stuff wasn't able to be recycled and went into landfill, what we don't have any figures on is the amount that got reused through scavenging. It'd be interesting to know what those, what the volumes actually were. So a large volume did get reused, but we don't actually have any statistics on what it was. But I'm happy to support the motion just because, you know, I'm interested to have another look at this issue. I have had residents contact me to say that they are disappointed with the hard waste service going and, you know, would like to see it reinstated. But, yeah, looking at alternative approaches would certainly be of interest to me.
Thank you, councillor Kiem. Councillor Walker, write a reply, please.
Thank you all for your contributions. And again, I do thank those that put the bit about, you know, the fact that it's, you know, assist councils determine how a hard waste collection service could best be reinstated. I think best is a really important word with that. I think we've all moved on from what was before. The residents have largely moved on before. And again, the feedback I was getting through that article was, you know, the approach interstate of the by-request, the phoning, the fact that there'll be maybe a couple of things on a street at any given week is seen as good. At risk of potentially losing councillor Darko's vote, the great thing is that unlike the Soviet-era trucks that go up and
the Soviet era trucks that go up and down in service with Hobart City Council, the gleaming innovation that capitalism produces with best vehicle plant will mean that if we do introduce this service, we're likely to have lower emission vehicles that are quieter and safer and just get the load away at a better rate. Yeah, so that one point was made that I thought, and was sort of said in a couple of ways, that thought that this process was always around investigation was always underway. I think there was inference is certainly that we wanted that to occur. I know I certainly said so when it got to the point that the hard waste service wasn't going to continue. I would just, at risk of verbling the CEO, note that were that to be the case, I'm sure that would have been written in the most detailed sort of points that if, you know, if alternative approaches had been well and truly underway with investigations, I'm sure that probably would have come to light. So as I said, I think this was a valued service. I think it forms part of, you know, waste, which is the core service. I don't think it's building expectations around the piles that sit in suburbs for weeks and sometimes months. If anything, I think it's opening the, it's actually, as we go through this, I think the desire amongst the community will be less so for that old service, but possibly more so for seeing how it's done elsewhere. But we'll get that information, we'll get that data hopefully if my motion's successful and we can move from there. So I thank you all for your contributions.
Thank you councillor Walker. Well, I put the motion, all those in favour. Those against? So, Carrie, thank you. Moving now on to item ten, which is council question time. Ten point one, there are no questions on notice, so we'll go to ten point three. Answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting, as listed in the agenda. Ten point four, questions without notice. Are there any questions from the floor starting this evening with the deputy mayor? Councillor Ritchie, thank you. Councillor Hunter? Councillor Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. Just before I ask my questions, I just wanted to echo your comments this morning about the injunction attack and understanding that you and your family were caught up in it. I'm glad that you're safe.
Thank you councillor Hume.
My first question in relation to the activities at twenty forty two Scots Road that we received some questions without notice about at the start of the meeting. I just wanted to ask, I did put forward the suggestion that we could have councillors, because the manager at the site has offered for us to go and look at it and did put the suggestion that we try and organise that as a group rather than, you know, taking up his time one on one. I was just wondering if that might be something that officers could facilitate.
Absolutely. The CEO's office will send out an email tomorrow. It's seeking level of interest from elected members.
Thank you. And the second question also in relation to that is, I understand that there's a lot of misunderstanding among residents of what council's powers are in this matter and, you know, from the briefings we've received, it seems our hands are very much tied. Do you think it would be advantageous to distribute some kind of a fact sheet to local residents to explain what's happening at the site and what council's powers are in relation to it?
Councillor Hume, thank you. Could we take that on notice, please, between Mr Ma, Miss Weeks and the CEO, come back with an answer? If you're comfortable with that, thank you. Thank you. Councillor James?
Yes, I have two questions. Firstly, Mr Susan Thomas contacted me today regarding the disgraceful state of the Rosney Mall, Bus Mall, and the very nature of the untidiness and the amount of rubbish that seems to be accumulating in there. And my question is in relation to how often does council, and I believe council has the, has the, oh, what's the word? Thank you, thanks, the responsibility of maintaining and cleaning the mall. And if so, could I just have some indication of when that's done and the very nature of how often it's done and to the extent to which it's clean on a daily or weekly basis?
Thank you councillor James. See you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take that on notice. Thank you.
The second question, excuse me, is in relation to Scots Road, twenty to forty two. My question is that currently it's under level one and that is under the responsibility of council. And so my question is, is council in a situation to be able to issue an infringement notice to abate a nuisance?
Thank you councillor James. Mr Ma, thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you councillor James for the question. The simple answer is an infringement notice is issued under the law of government or an infringement notice issued under the empty council main. However, it depends on the nature of the nuisance and whether it's associated with the nuisance of a sale or arising from the land, which causes the issue with the level two, the life insurance, the condition of the simple answer is this.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Councillor Walker? Councillor Going?
Wonderful night. Earlier we were talking about footpaths and I was going to put a tongue in cheek in what a footpath is because as a rural resident, we don't have footpaths anywhere where I've ever lived. Can I just ask, when we did our recent road surveys, are footpaths surveyed in the same sort of manner as well? Because just recently I was walking through or attempting to walk through Rosney Bus Mall with the pram and it's, there's almost parts that are impassable for me. And I'd like to think that, you know, I'm reasonably able bodied. So how do we go about assessing the footpaths? Are they assessed on the same sort of, you know, scheme with the roads as well? And how do we go about sort of putting in requests for upgrades on those?
Thank you councillor Going. Ms Moore?
I'm through you, Mayor. We do assess our footpaths and we use a similar process, but it's not done at the same time. So the Ayr survey vehicle that's just came through in February was surveying the roads and I think it was doing the Curven Channel at the same time. But we do have a separate condition survey that's done of the footpaths and I think that was done last year. So about six to twelve months ago, we did a survey and that is done every three years and feeds into our ongoing renewal programme for footpaths. So yes, we do, is the short answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Moore. Councillor Darko. Councillor Warren. Councillor Chong?
Two questions please, Mr Mayor. The first one is in the Britishman village area, where we've seen closed slide area because the fittings are rotted on the things. Do we have any expectation of data when that will be fixed and reopened?
Thank you, Ms Moore.
I'm through you, Mayor. We have sourced replacement items on a like-for-like basis. They've been selected and we've gone out for quotes for supply of those pieces of equipment. They should be ordered within the next week or so. There's an eight week lead time on supply for those items and then the equipment will need to be installed by contractor. So it's expected that the work should be completed earlier than July.
Thank you. Your second question?
Thank you. Yes, somebody mentioned to me the other day, the Mother's Day classic is on in May and is starting at Bowery Beach Park and in theory going along the footpath towards Howra. Can they, will they be able to do that by the time we get to the middle of May? Because at the moment you can't get through there, can you?
Ms Moore?
I'm through you, Mayor. I think you're alluding to these beach streets. My understanding is that the Clarence Whosher trail is still open and able to be used by public. And if it is closed, there are suitable alternative interventions put in place. I think it's probably worthwhile in taking the others and bringing it up with the contractors so that they're aware of that event. Because again, we do a similar exercise with the contractor for the schools triathlon at the end of November, beginning of December and work with them around those lifestyle events.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Moore. Councillor Kennedy? Well, colleagues, we're now on item number eleven, which for closed meetings, I call for motion to move into closed meeting. Please move councillor Chong, second to councillor Going. Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Thank you. So thank you to those members of the public that joined us this evening and those that joined us via the live stream at home. See you back here in three weeks' time. Thank you. Have a wonderful week. Please end the live feed.